We're going to deal with five individuals. Five individuals. Hopefully, all five of them do it. If we help one, it'll be worth it. That'll be one that we don't have to worry about anymore. One that's going to touch a life. I want to tell a story I've never told in public ever before. My dad was a 20-year law enforcement officer. Hard worker, good guy. Three-term city councilman. My brother was 26-years-old. My dad was woke up in the middle of the night. Said, "Bob, your son's dead. He's passed away." Combination of drugs and alcohol. My dad was devastated. He called me up and that... That voice and that devastating tone. Kevin's dead. Kevin's dead. Kevin's dead. I think my dad blamed himself for a while. He did everything he could. He was 26-years-old. It took a big piece of his life. I tried to bring it up to him a couple of times afterwards. It was so devastating. We didn't even talk about it after that. That was my brother, a 26-years-old. Never to have a family, never to reach his potential. That's who he was, right there. That's my brother. Good guy. Good guy. Made a mistake. I went to a seminar one time and a guy was there and he put 12 young people on a billboard. Poster board. All under the age of 20. I thought, "Well, that's a lot of people." He said, "There was 12 people within one community alone. All under the age of 20. Gone. Never to reach their potential, never to have children." It's 12 people that families were destroyed, communities were torn apart because they made a mistake. Not one of those 12 people thought they were going to die. I went to another seminar and a guy rolled out a casket. It was pretty powerful. He said, "You want to do drugs? That's where you're going to end up. You're going to die." We need to have a frank and truthful discussion on what happens. "Oh, we've done it two or three times. Nothing happened to us." If you do drugs, you're going to die. Talk to your children. Be frank with them. You will die if you do drugs. If you don't, you'll meet one of these individuals here, then it's probably too late. So tonight, we're going to have the panel speak. We're going to do some questions, answers, and I want you to ask these people questions. Because you need to know, you need to have the information that what we need to do to part of that. We have to plug everybody in. And after we leave here tonight, we're going to work. We're going to take it to the streets. You've heard that phrase. "We're going to take it to the streets." They got a sheriff, I looked on today, a video of a sheriff, Lake County, Florida. Getting a little negative feedback. Politically correct, okay? We don't have time for that either. Kids are dying. We have got to stop the madness. Stop burying our teenagers, our young adults. Parents that turn to drugs. Help them. We need to help them. Lake County, Florida. Sheriff, y'all look at the video. He's serious. He's serious. These guys are serious. It's time to have that conversation. And I hope we have it tonight. So first of all, I'm going to ask Misty Elliott, if she'd come up. She has a story to tell. Misty, would you come on up, please?
I have notes because I'm not as well-versed as Brad is. I do want to tell you, though, that his story really hit home for me. My name is Misty, and I'm here tonight to speak to you as a parent and a stepparent. I'll tell you a little bit about myself first. I have two adult children of my own, and I have three stepchildren, one who's passed away. I have several grandchildren. I live in this community and I work in this community as a dispatcher for the Shelbyville Police Department. I see and hear on a daily basis how drugs are tearing this community apart, tearing lives apart, and tearing families apart. And it's time for it to stop. I'm also the co-founder of Life Beyond the Darkness, and I'll tell you more about that What I'd like to start with, though, is the story of my stepson. His name's Billy. And Billy was a good kid. Made really good grades in school. Scored extremely high on his SATs. As a matter of fact, he scored like 960 out of 1,200. Received letters of interest in high school from several colleges. West Point, Western Michigan, Franklin College. They were all interested in him for football. Boy of the Year at the Boys Club here. He did a lot of work here with other kids at the Boys Club. He sat out of school, though, after he graduated for about a year. But then, he received a scholarship after sitting out for a year for track. So that tells you a little bit about, you know, his athleticism, his grades. When he got that scholarship, he went to the Danville Area Community College for track. And that's when the troubles started. It started with minor things like alcohol and what other people would generally consider minor things. That's where it went downhill. Billy then started dabbling in a lot of different drugs. He hid it. He distanced himself from his family. He would kind of come and go. He'd become active in the family, and then we'd not see him for a while. And then later on, towards the end, he completely distanced himself from his father and I for the last four years of his life. November 12th, 2012, we received a phone call at about 8:00 PM. And Greenwood Police Department tried to tell my husband, but my husband couldn't take the call. So he gave them permission to talk to me. And at that point, I'll never forget, Officer Cotton Ginn was his name, proceeded to tell me that my stepson was dead. I'll never forget the man's voice. I'll never forget the words. And I'll never forget that he told me that my stepson had been given a hot shot of heroin. And ultimately, that it stopped his heart and took his life. Addiction affects everyone differently. So there are going to be different signs, different symptoms, and different things that we all need to look out for. So when you're looking at your children and they start acting different, they start hanging out with different kids, it's time to open your eyes. On the flip side of that, I also have a son who's in recovery. What I want to say about that is that every day, I thank God that he's been in recovery that day, and every night, I pray to God that he'll be in recovery again tomorrow. Because it's a day-by-day battle. Due to the lack of resources in Shelby County, I decided that I was going to get together with some friends of mine who also have children battling addiction. So we formed a group of just parents, basically, who have decided to lean on each other, and we call ourselves Life Beyond the Darkness. Basically, we provide support for each other. We will eventually be starting a support group for parents and loved ones, an official support group. We also provide resources for those battling addiction. We have more information. You can reach one of us. There are some other members of the group here. So after the meeting, you can get in touch with one of us, and we'll provide you with more information. I want to thank you for being here tonight. It's very important. This is such an important cause. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mike Turner.
I won't take a whole lot of your guys' time because honestly, I think events like this are designed for you guys to be able to engage with us and ask your questions and have this panel answer what you guys are thinking. I will say from myself, I've been basically an 18-year member of the police department. I go out to all kinds of businesses, schools, and give these talks on drugs and alcohol, on other types of crimes that we deal with. And I don't think people understand the impact that it truly has on a community. You know, we see where we've lost loved ones. We hear from Misty where we've lost loved ones. But what you guys don't see is, is that it costs, on average, is about $16,000 a year, if I'm in that ballpark, I believe, to house an inmate. And that's a national average. So $16,000 a year tax dollars goes to pay to house that person that has been picked up on drugs. Roughly 90% of our crime is driven by drugs. So if we could reduce drugs just a fraction, half, just think of how much crime that would go down in the city alone, in the county alone, and, you know, I mean, almost everybody in here could probably raise their hand at some point they've been impacted by a crime. Whether it's a theft, whether it's a loss of a loved one, whether it's calling in something to the police department that you've seen. Everybody is impacted by this on some level. You know, we're lucky, and I say that in a, you know, a careful way because we're not like some of the counties that are seeing 24 deaths since the first of the year due to heroin. Since 2014, Shelby County has seen eight poly-drug overdoses, deaths. I think in 2016, we didn't have one, if I'm not mistaken. I think that is a testament to not only the enforcement side that law enforcement does, but the medical sides, the fire department does, the response time, and I think the education that's getting out there. But if I had to drive one thing home to you guys, it is that you have to become more active. You know, we can't, law enforcement, prosecutor, fire department, politicians, we can't do this by ourselves. Law enforcement is reactive, unfortunately. Typically, as much as we want to be out there and do the education programs like we do, a lot of the job is reactive because we're catching them as they're doing the crime or as they're transporting or whatever. Brad's job, once it's already done and it moves to him to prosecute these kind of cases, it all starts at home with you guys. It's, you know, how many people in here, just real quick, a show of hands, have prescription pills in your house right now? Yeah. And how many people put them in a lockbox? And how many people know that heroin, the number-one cause for heroin addiction, is prescription pills? But yet, we leave them laying around our house with our kids running around? And it's not our kids we worry about, but what about the friends that come over? You know, when a kid can get $45 for a pill at school, do you not think that's tempting for some of these kids to take a bottle? Next thing you know, it's missing, you go get it replaced, and the cycle just keeps happening. So really, if I ask one thing out of this group is, today, when you start asking your questions, is educate yourself on what you can do to help prevent the drugs getting onto our streets, the prescription pills getting onto the streets and into our schools. Because I'm telling you now, this is an awesome group, guys, because I've done some of these before with different topics, and, you know, you get one, two, three people show up. So to have an audience here that is engaged and willing to learn, educate yourself today. There's not a question up here that nobody on this... I mean, everybody will answer your questions up here, and we'll answer them honestly, as painful as it may be sometimes. But you guys have to ask the questions and get involved.
Sergeant Coffey come up here next.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for the opportunity to come here to speak this evening. I'm honored and humbled to have this opportunity on behalf of the six-and-a-half million people that call Indiana home. I serve the area of the Indianapolis Post, which is the Indianapolis and the seven, other six counties surrounding it. So I have seven counties in my coverage area. My day-to-day operations are criminal investigations, and I oversee and manage the criminal investigations of our district there. I do not work directly involved with narcotics themselves, but as Mike from the Drug Free Coalition and Shelbyville Police Department alluded to, he is absolutely correct that the lion's share of what we end up doing day-to-day is driven by narcotics. Violent crimes, serious violent crimes, anything that you're seeing on TV, the homicides and things, those are not random acts. They are over drug debts, they are over narcotics or something of that nature, and those are the types of things that we're dealing with every single day. I know that, I feel like I can make a comment on behalf of Governor Holcomb. He made a comment during his State of the State address. He is abundantly clear on the seriousness of this issue and is currently working to develop a plan. And I'm confident within the next weeks and months, as they move forward, the Indiana State Police's role will also change in that endeavor as well. I grabbed a few statistics just to throw out at you. Please keep in mind, these are just Indiana State Police statistics only. We do not collect data from the Sheriff's Department or city police agencies for these types of things, and these are as of 2016. Our agency seized approximately 17 pounds of heroin, which, you know, may not seem like a lot. However, that is usually sold in tenths of grams. So a kilogram is 2.2 pounds, for those that don't know, and the estimated value, according to some of our folks, is somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000 per kilogram. However, the amount that we seized has the estimated value of over $442,000, and that's just our agency alone. We're an agency of just under 1,300 people. The average dose, as I said, is about a tenth of a gram, and here's the kicker, it can be sold on the streets for as little as $5 to $10. So as Mike indicated, prescription drug abuse is the indicator to this, but why are they moving to heroin? It's harder now to get prescription medications because of some of the measures that the medical community, and I'll let Scott talk about that here momentarily. But those are some of the things that are feeding this problem. The thing that hit home with me is that you have to think about how dangerous heroin is, and I think we all know that, that's why we're here tonight. But it's the unknown ingredients that they use to manufacture it that makes it so very dangerous. Currently, fentanyl is one of the additives that they're using as a cut agent, as it's called. But they also use things like rat poison, meat tenderizer, and other things. Conversely, the other thing that is scourge here clearly, we talked about briefly, is methamphetamines. The Indiana State Police in 2016 seized approximately 37 pounds of that. The thing about methamphetamines is there's an exact formula to make it versus heroin. A dosage for methamphetamine is 1/8 of a gram, and it's typically sold again for $5 to $10. So it's incredibly cheap. The dollar value that we seized as an agency is just over $394,000 last year. So it's incredibly lucrative. Out of that, we have the methamphetamine labs, which are a huge problem in our communities. We had 947 of those last year, down from 1,500 the year before, which is an encouraging trend. However, some of those reasons for the decrease is some measures that have been enacted through the General Assembly and others. But most importantly, what's going on is, it is cheaper to import the drug. It's coming from Mexico, and they are able to manufacture it there and transport it into the country. So the reasoning that they're doing that is, it's easier for them to import it, and so far this year, in the first quarter of 2017, we've had 137 labs. Why are laboratories important to you if you live in the community? The problem is, once a laboratory has been dismantled, is the ongoing effects in that residence after a laboratory has been dismantled. Just removing that item does not reduce the danger to you or the community. The remediation, there are special companies that will remediate these homes, and so they had, they passed some statute to help people who were unknowingly renting or buying homes that were former meth labs. So now we've addressed that, but they can cause very serious health complications, certainly to you and your children as well. But the strain on government resources is immense, and, you know, as it's been said, we are not going to arrest our way out of this problem. If that were the case, then we would have already achieved that. That's not working. So it's going to be a multifaceted approach, and the, you know, I was talking to a gentleman here from one of the faith-based community things, and I mentioned this comment to him earlier, and it resonated with him, so I think he's going to use it from now on. But sometimes, the toughest thing about doing anything is the six inches between our ears. We've got to get out of our way of ourselves and figure out how we're going to tackle this thing, and we're smarter together, and we can do these things. But we have to have more eyes and ears, and hands and feet out on the ground doing the work with us. And just like Mike said, you know, Crime Stoppers is available. There's all types of avenues that you can help us help the community here, but together, we can work toward that end. So that is all I have. So thank you very much for the opportunity, Councilman.
I have Police Chief Widener come up, please.
Well, between Mike and Jeff, basically, everything that I had planned to say has already been said. I can tell you that I've been doing this job for 29 years, and with the exception of the four, four-and-a-half years I've spent inside an administration, I spent almost 25 years on the street. When I started, it wasn't uncommon to see people who were intoxicated with alcohol or perhaps marijuana. But I can tell you now, today, a day doesn't go by that we don't see somebody that's on some type of narcotic drug, heroin, the prescription drugs, things like that. It just doesn't happen. You don't get by a day without seeing it. We do need to change this. We're not going to do it on our own. You're not going to do it on your own. We've got to all do it together. We've all got tools to work with, and that's what we do. And not, not one of those tools is going to work unless we have them all in motion. So I would invite your questions here when we get finished, and I'll do the best I can. All I know is, we can do, we cannot do nothing. We've got to do something, and we've all got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Prosecutor Landry Wellen, I'd like for him to come up while he's on his way. I'm going to touch on what Chief said. In the '70s, when your house was burglarized or people stole from you, they wanted stuff. Okay? You caught them, they ran away, for the most part. They didn't want to hurt anybody, they just wanted the stuff. They wanted to sell the stuff, use the stuff. Today, if you don't want to get involved, they're going to kill you. They're going to come in the house, they're going to steal. People on drugs aren't thinking clearly, they will hurt you. This is why I need your help. This is why it's not happened to me. It could happen to you. We do not want you to be a victim. Thank you, Chief. Brad, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Is this thing on? Oh, you can hear me okay? That's right. I'm loud enough, anyway. And by the way, Brad told us beforehand, you know, he'd like us to stay about 10 minutes. You don't hand a lawyer a microphone and say, "Talk for 10 minutes." It just doesn't happen. Let me ask you a question real quick. How many people in here, and I've asked this of juries, and it's amazing, how many people in here know of someone? I'm not going to ask you who it is, I ask everyone not to ask the people around you. Know someone, either a family member or a friend who has a drug problem? Raise your hand. Look around the room. All right? It's pretty prevalent, right? Did you realize until just now, was that prevalent? Or did you think you were sort of fighting this alone? You're not fighting it alone. Well, actually, you are fighting it alone. Things like this are hoping to get us to fight it together, things like what Misty's doing. Groups, support groups, that's to try to help you, you know, have more support in fighting this and fighting it as a front. A couple of things that have been said up here, one of them is, there was a mention of very few overdoses. And one of the difficulties is, as a matter of fact, there's been legislation to try to get the coroners required to list specifically when there's a poly-drug overdose, because a lot of them don't. It just, they have certain areas that they have to put it in. It's suicide, it's natural, it's accidental, or it's homicide. And so they don't have, and they're trying to get a special listing for that. And I can tell you, for instance, we had a lady that snuck some drugs into the jail, and she got very sick. This was just a few weeks ago. And they took her out of the jail to the hospital, she was shipped to Indianapolis, she ended up dying. Well, that's not considered an overdose in Shelby County. She died in Marion County. Okay? And as a matter of fact, the jail was even telling me, it's not considered a jail death statistic. So that's a local overdose death, that it doesn't count. I can tell you, we do have overdose death problems here. Let me ask this question. How many of you know someone who's overdosed and died because of drugs? Look around. Again. That happens. That's one reason that I'm trying to do some things that a prosecutor doesn't usually do. I'm getting a little tired of getting called out. A lot of you don't realize, prosecutor gets called out on a little bit of everything. And for instance, once I got called out to a scene, and people like to say, "Oh, drugs are a victimless crime," right? Victimless crime. Well, we got called out, and there were two people, and they were seated on the floor, leaned up against the couch, right when you walked through the door, and about, and they both overdosed and died on heroin. And about two, two-and-a-half feet away is their child standing in a little crib. So I want you to explain to that child how drugs are a victimless crime. A lot of people, and I used to feel a bit like this, "Hey, if you want to use dope, go ahead. Kill yourself." You know what? It's not that simple. I had another case, very, very disturbing case. I want you to explain to this child how drugs are a victimless crime. Child, and I'm going to call him Johnny for now. It came to my attention because he'd been molested several times. His mother was a heroin addict, and his father was in prison for several years because of some crimes he did for drugs. So he would go next door and use the neighbor's phone to call his grandma. He loved calling grandma. But the, basically, the charge, what the neighbor would charge him, is he had to let him have sex with him. And it's hard to imagine that until you realize how this case came around. And we had, we had some great evidence. Jury convicted the man. I convicted him. He's doing, I can't remember, 45, 50, 60, I don't remember. His name's Leonardo Dominguez. You can look that up in the DOC, and you'll tell exactly how long he's doing. So that sounds great. This boy's nine-years-old when this happens, and he's a little slow. We get called to his house a while later because there's a young man who's overdosed on heroin. He's dead, laying there. Right above the body, I look up, and there's a little postboard where they had a flyer where they had been to a funeral the day before for another young man who'd overdosed and died. Okay? And while I'm going through the house and looking through Johnny, I'm going to call him Johnny, Johnny's stuff, his mom had taken the time to hide needles in his pillowcase and in his coat and stuff. It's a little Johnny, that's what he grew up knowing. Okay? Two weeks to the day later, get called back to the same house. His mom's dead. She overdosed. So I want you to explain to him for a second how drugs are a victimless crime. You're right, if his mom wants to expose herself to that... You're right, if his mom wants to expose herself to that, you know, at least she's only hurting herself, some think. But no, it doesn't work that way. So again, drugs are not a victimless crime, and yes, we do have overdose deaths here. This is all very, very real stuff. It's getting worse. I ran some statistics, it wasn't in part of this, I just run them occasionally. About a week and a half ago, we're up about 20% on drug offenses, we're up about 20% on all other offenses. Everything, everything you can think of, the burglaries, the robberies, everything people do to support their drug habits. Why are we up like that? Are police just doing that much better job? Well, I'd like to think they're doing a good job. But the bottom line is, that's unfortunately something we're seeing statewide. And that really started picking up when our legislature, a couple of years ago, passed what they called House Bill 1006. I call it the hug-a-thug-or-be-kind-of-crime legislation. And it dropped the offenses for dealing and so on. That's one reason in Indiana, believe it or not, we're paying the same right now for heroin and cocaine and meth that we've been paying. It didn't go up like it has in other states. And sometimes, we get it cheaper than we used to. Why? There's less disincentive to deal. You don't get as big of a hit if you get caught. Okay? So there are more people dealing, and from that point on, it's basic business. It's competition. You know, you got to sell. I've talked to several people who've expressed, several dealers who've expressed regret when they finally get clean, because, and they've told me, "I took my three or four best friends. I got them addicted to drugs because I had to support my habit." So you've got to understand, in order to support these habits, you generally have to steal or deal. And I talked to several that have two, three, four, sometimes four and $500 a day habits. How many of you can afford 500 bucks a day right now? No? Neither can they. But you're paying for it, because they break into your house and steal stuff. Or if they don't, they addict somebody else who breaks into your house and steals stuff, gives them money, so they can keep their dope going. That's unfortunately how the business works. So one of the big increases we've seen over the last several months has been heroin. And Mr. Coffey's exactly right. People get hooked a lot of times on pills and so on, because nobody thinks they're that dirty. It's from pharmacies, it can't be that bad. And they start getting hooked. And before you know it, heroin is cheaper. It's just cheaper. And if you think it's bad now, wait till they finish I-69, we have a direct shot coming up. This is my opinion. I've heard no one else talk about it. When they have a direct shot from Mexico up to here on 69, there's a reason Indianapolis is the crossroads of America, it's because you can ship things all over the eastern seaboard. We will be Chicago. All that violence in Chicago, the Warriors cartel is based up there for the eastern half of the US, it's going to move to Indianapolis. We're going to have a lot more drugs here. So we need to start fighting this as much as we can right now. I'm just, I'll put any amount of money you want on it. You're going to see that violence in Chicago shift largely to Indianapolis and surrounding communities, including Shelbyville. So what can you do? Well, one thing I wanted to do, it's not really a prosecutor's job to try to help people who are addicted, but it is a prosecutor's job, in my opinion, to fight crime. And if I can get you off dope, you're not stealing to support your habit. So I recently, took months, but I recently launched a new program. Mr. Ridgeway talked about it for a moment. He was a little bit wrong in what he said. It's not going to help five people. It's going to help five people initially. That's so we can shake the bugs out of it, and then it's going to expand. It's a Vivitrol program to help with opiates. If you have a loved one who has an opiate addiction problem, oxycodone, oxycontin, you know, fentanyl, heroin, things like that, holler at me afterwards, and I can get you information on this. You can go to your doctor and get on a similar program. But it's for lower-level offenders, and basically, Vivitrol blocks the receptors in the brain from receiving the so-called pleasure stimuli from the opiate. So you still shoot up, you just don't feel it. It's like shooting water in your veins. By the way, just over the weekend, two of the people Brad talked about, I got a call one night. The officers found two women passed out, well, overdosed in a car. One of them still laying there with a needle in her arm. You know, that's happening here, Shelbyville. That's, that's all the time, unfortunately. And there's nothing special about Shelbyville, that's everywhere. But I think we, as a fairly small community, we're standing in a better position to fight it than a lot of Indianapolis and places like that. So anyway, the Vivitrol program's up and going. We've started a drug awareness program in the jail. It's not a true treatment program. We don't really just have that kind of ability. Maybe our county council can come up with a little money on that. But I mean, bottom line is, it costs money. It's going to be your tax money. We going to take it out of your kid's school? Because they have so much money they can spend. But we're trying to get a treatment program in there. But at least we have an awareness program in the jail right now, available to the inmates. We've never had that. So again, this is sort of, think of it as a pre-treatment program that we've started there as well. What can you do? You are the eyes and ears out here. Number one, you can help encourage friends and family to get clean. Lot of people, and if, how many of you know somebody with an opiate problem? By show of hands. How many of you, have you ever heard this? "I can't quit, I'll get dope sick." I'll get, right. There's actually something out there now you may not know about, it's called the Bridge. It's implanted right behind the ear. It's not a major surgery or anything. It costs 500 bucks, so it's not much of a surgery. It helps quell the dope sickness. It's working very well. Once they're clean for at least 14 days, then they can go on Vivitrol, and it doesn't matter if they shoot up, they're not going to get high. Okay? Now, if that's their real problem, if they're not trying to escape reality by any drug they can find, if they're just an opiate addict, which a lot of them are, that's your first step. Get them clean, get them on Vivitrol. They're never going to be able to get high as long as they're on Vivitrol. It's about a one-year program. Another thing you can do, and we've had this in place for some time, is our office has a tip line, and that number is very easy. We all know 398 is a prefix in Shelbyville. Just call 398 CALL. CALL if you see something suspicious. One of the main things we'll ask you to watch for, and we've all seen it, how many of you have ever seen, how many of you had a neighbor that just, they get too many visitors late at night that are there for five minutes? They're in and out. And on the weekends, that's when most of this is taking place. It takes place during day some too, but that's the majority of what we see. CALL. Tell us about it. You know, you've got to give us a call. Doesn't mean we can rush in and arrest everybody. It's not, we're not Nazi Germany. But we can start an investigation. And that's how we've busted a lot of these people. And that can help keep other people from getting addicted, or from feeding their addiction, or their addiction from getting worse, keep them from overdosing, things like that. So that's a part of what we ask. One more thing I'll ask is your input. Like I said earlier, we got a lot of very smart people sitting here. You have ideas. Get those ideas to us. Some of them we might be able to use, and help with this problem. But it's a problem. You've seen here how many people are impacted by it. Make no mistake, it's a problem. We need to address it head-on, we need to punch it right in the face. And one of the other things is, talk to your legislatures, legislators. Try to get them to raise those penalties for dealing this death, dealing this heroin and so on, back up somewhat reasonable. I've had several people here recently that would have been a Class A felon drug dealer, even with big prior criminal records and so on, and they would have faced 20 to 50 years. Well, now they're facing an absolute maximum of six years, generally, and as little as two. And most of that's usually suspended because of the way the legislature changed the law, no matter what their record was, no matter how bad their record is. And that's to your heroin dealers out there. They wanted to be real nice to our heroin dealers. They didn't want to put them in jail, they want to keep heroin dealers on the street. That's what the laws did when they changed them. They got to reverse that a little bit. So them's my thoughts. Thank you.
Where's the newspaper? John Walker? That number, it should be in the newspaper every day. The headline, bottom or top? Okay, 398 CALL.
... by one of the drug investigators, and it goes directly to his phone. The minute you leave a message, he knows. So you can call and say they're doing it right now. He'll know. He may not be able to stop what he's doing, he'll do it. He may not be able to do it either.
That's a good point. We should have that published somewhere every day, so people can constantly see it. If I had my way, we'd put a billboard out there. 398 CALL, Facebook, whatever. We need to get it out there. People will call. They're reluctant to get involved, but as Brad indicated, the dealers are here, and they're going to come. And it's going to get more violent. But look how many eyes and ears we have here. They're not going to come to Shelbyville. They're going to go around Shelbyville. We're going to try to make that happen. So we need to get that number somewhere out there all the time. Okay, Mr. Grove, will you please come up? The worst-case scenario, if you have a loved one that does overdose, I hope and pray, I hope and pray, you have a guy like this that's coming, or somebody like it on its way. He's going to explain that to you.
Well, I have a few statistics for Shelby County. Shelbyville Fire Department provides paramedics for all of Shelby County. It's a little hard to qualify, as we talked about, we're just kind of picking this out and seeing that this is becoming a huge problem. So our systems weren't built to pick out specifics, heroin user overdose. So you've got to be kind of tricky with the way that you pick the data out. And so I want you got to take it for this. Sometimes we have to administer multiple doses. I can tell you how many doses of naloxone I've given, our department's given, over the last three years. That doesn't mean that's how many patients there are. They could, somebody might get multiple doses of the same thing. So in 2015, we gave 106 doses. 2016, we gave, it was up about 118. And we're on track right now to be at about 150. And one of the things that we're seeing in the medical field, and what I want to talk to you guys, is, well, why do they die from heroin? What is it that does it to them? And most of these officers up here were touched on that. And what heroin does, it's no different than morphine, it's no different than fentanyl, it's the exact same thing. It's just an illegal version of it. Okay? It's made from the same stuff. But when you buy your morphine prescription, it's regulated by the FDA. You know exactly what the dose is. You know exactly what's in it. And with heroin, you have no idea how strong it is. You have no idea what they've put in it. And you might know it, and they're making it stronger. They're making a thing called carfentanil, which is heroin laced with fentanyl, which is actually more like an elephant tranquilizer, and it's about 10 times more potent. It takes a lot more of our naloxone to reverse this. So I'm going to talk about what heroin actually does to you. Heroin is what we call a central nervous depressant. And so what kills people from heroin is they stop breathing. Plain and simple. That's it. You lower your respiratory rate, and you start to become hypoxic, and you do not get the oxygen around to your system, and you ease into unconsciousness. This happens very rapidly. Most of the overdoses that we find still have the heroin needle in their arm. Okay? That's how quick the onset is. You might start to vomit your stomach contents, and now you risk aspiration into your lungs from the vomit. And then you become unconscious, and your respiratory rate slowly starts to decrease. And you slowly start to become more and more hypoxic. And with this, your heart rate will start to decrease from the lack of oxygen. If you, somebody is not breathing for you shortly thereafter, you will start to experience brain damage in about four minutes, and death will be within a minute or so after that. It's a very easy fix. It's a drug called naloxone, or Narcan. And I'm sure you guys, this has been subject of great debate. It is open to the public to have at home, for anybody that has a relative or is living with an addict. Narcan competes with opiates, all opiates, not just heroin, all opiates, to the receptors and kicks them off. It takes a very low dose of Narcan to do this. That reverses the effects of that opiate. They will now become completely awake and say, "Oh, I didn't do anything." The heroin needle's still in your arm. Completely awake, they will completely start breathing again, and that happens instantaneously. If you have somebody that has an addiction problem, and is using, this might be something you guys need to look at to have at home, is Narcan. It's administered at home through a mucosal atomizer into the nose, and it's absorbed through the mucosa in the nose. It's very fast absorption rates. The big thing is, is that when heroin addicts start to feel that euphoria, and they kind of push themselves all the time, they start to build up this tolerance, and they'll start to push and push and push. And so they're just continually putting more and more heroin, or any opiate, into their body. So some of the signs you're going to see is, you're going to see them being, they'll tell you that they're just tired. Well, I've been tired before, but I've never been unarousable, right? Or not able to open my eyes. These are all these initial signs that they're probably high. They'll have track marks, there's two injections, they either inject it or they snort it. Okay? And the one thing that, I work in Indianapolis as a paramedic as well. Do you know how many people from Shelbyville I see overdosed in Indianapolis? Unbelievable amount. Unbelievable amount. It's almost shocking to me at times, when they tell me where they live. They will go to Indianapolis, to the dealer, score there, and go right to the parking lot, and shoot right then and there. So those are kind of, it's very difficult for us to tell you exact statistics. We can give you the best we can, and what we think, but it's definitely a huge problem. And be glad to answer any questions you guys have on any of that.
Thank you, Scott. You can cite all the statistics you want, and they're very, very important. We need them. We need to be able to track everything. But to put a face on it, who's this right here? You mind sharing your story just briefly? Can you tell me your story about her? You mind doing that? You have to talk loud.
Okay. That's usually not a problem. Well, this was my son's, who's an active addict. Well, not now, he's incarcerated, so he's clean. Thank you, God. But this was his girlfriend, she OD'd and died. My birthday, 9/28/08. And she's from Shelbyville, Alicia Hergenrother. I just don't want her face to be forgotten. You know, she was, she was a good girl. You know, she grew up in the church and kind of lost her way, and I'm just really sad that I couldn't help her.
Thank you. It's fine. I just, most of these gentlemen up here will tell you, some people are bad people. They're just bad people. They're going to do drugs no matter what. But most of these people, good people, good people, good people made a mistake. We need to try to, try to help those people. I'm opening up for questions, and I want you to, and to ask these gentlemen, any questions you have. Here again, you need to be educated and know what it takes to join this war. It's a war. Okay? I'm going to start with one question real quick, then I'm going to turn it over to the audience. For the whole panel, if you would, start with Brad, and just real quickly here. If there's one thing that you need now, I mean, we need it now, what would it be to help in this war? Each one of you, Brad?
... medicine, alcohol, cannabis, all. You know? Please.
... we're doing that in the hopes of interdicting some of those, to catch some of this stuff at work, comes into town. Or gets into someone else's town. Every ounce of that stuff we take off of the road doesn't wind up in somebody's veins. And I would just like people to be a little more tolerant when they see things like that. That doesn't cost anything.
It's a grant.
Please.
Or gets into someone else's town. Every ounce of that stuff we take off of the road doesn't wind up in somebody's veins. And I would just like people to be a little more tolerant when they see things like that. That doesn't cost anything.
It's a grant.
Sorry?
It's the grant money.
Yeah. It's being paid for by an outside grant. It's not taxpayer money being used to pay these guys to do this. And it has a purpose.
One of the things that I run into with folks here in the community is, they don't think that things can happen here. And what I would offer to you is, whether you want to accept this or not, Shelbyville and Shelby County are a part of the Indianapolis metropolitan area. You heard our fire personnel, Scott Grove, mention when he works up there, where do these folks go? There's one reason that they don't come here. I would like to think that it's through good aggressive prosecution and law enforcement work. But what I would tell you is, we have the unfortunate marriage that we are a part of Indianapolis, and with that comes its own challenges. In my district, Hamilton County is a part of that. For those of you that are not aware, Hamilton County is the wealthiest county in the state of Indiana. I was there two weeks ago for a detective's meeting, and the biggest topic of conversation was what we're talking about here this evening, in Hamilton County, Carmel, Indiana no less. Carmel's extremely wealthy. Carmel is struggling mightily with this very same issue. And so, you know, again, I mentioned it during my presentation, the biggest challenge is the six inches between our ears. We're smarter together, and we need your assistance. We're doing our part, our valiant best to do our part here. But it has to be a group effort to address this on a multifaceted front, through enforcement, treatment, all the other areas that I don't necessarily have the knowledge, but we have people here that have that knowledge, and we can partner together to address this. And I think if anything else, this is a testament to how proud our community is and how much they do want to help. And I'm grateful for everyone's taking time out of their schedules. You guys have other things you could do, but you chose to be here tonight, and I think that's a great thing.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Turner?
I would just say that, I kind of echo what everybody else here said, that if there's one thing that we could get from a law enforcement standpoint, you know, from the drug-free side of things that I do, you know, because of my involvement in law enforcement, I get a set on boards like the drug-free, and we've got education and prevention and stuff that we fund, and that's great. But we, from a law enforcement standpoint, we have got to bridge the gap between the public and law enforcement. We've got to get rid of that, it's us-against-them mentality, because we are here for you guys. We need your help. We need you to step up and come to us and talk to us about stuff, whether it's anonymous through a phone call, or it's face-to-face conversations. You know, the police department door is always open, and we want to talk to you to get this stuff off the streets. We just need that first step to come in and make that. So, the one thing I think would be to form that team or that relationship between law enforcement and the public to get the ball rolling, to say, "We really want to make an effective change in our community, and we as the public are willing to do this." You know, there's social media out there. There's, you know, cell phones. Everybody's got a way to communicate nowadays. And, you know, police department has social media pages, and we're available. We've all got cell phones nonstop nowadays. Just make the call, or send the post, or, you know, whatever you need to do. But if we can make that connection, make that relationship, we can really make a big impact on this.
Thank you. Misty?
Well, Brad, I know you asked for just one, but I don't know that I can narrow it down to one, so I'm going to give you three. I think the first thing that I would say is the biggest need is to lose the stigma that's associated with it. People are so scared of admitting it, or admitting that they have a family member with an addiction Lose that fear, because that fear is what's hindering getting them help. Lose the fear. The second thing, I believe, is more accessible treatment. And the third thing comes hand-in-hand with that, and that is more availability to funding for treatment.
Thank you. Scott?
I think that truthfully, realistic treatment is what's needed. The methadone clinics, they're not cutting it. It's just a substitute. And I think having realistic treatment goals and to couple that with job fairs and stuff like that, because what happens with the addicts that we see is, I can tell you, they don't choose it. They may think they do, but they're not choosing this life. They're falling into it, and it's becoming this vicious cycle. And they're unemployed, and I have a huge thing about idle hands. You know, they sit around all day, and they need a treatment for their addictions, and then get them out and get them skills so they can be involved, and start to get them employed again, and start to be active in the community. I mean, I think that's huge. I think just substituting their heroin with this methadone and then "see you next week", that's just not cutting it. So, I think some realistic treatments need to be established.
Thank you, panel. What I'm hearing from the panel is what this night's all about. We need you. We need you. I seen this gentleman over here, you had a question. Go ahead, stand up, introduce yourself, who you might want to address, you want to address the whole panel, or somebody individual? Just talk up a little louder.
I'm pretty loud. I don't think I'm going to need them.
Well, that goes to the radio.
Okay. I just got a couple of questions here. One, in terms, I'm assuming that the law enforcement in town, that you can identify after a while who dealers are with drugs and stuff like that? Would that be correct? In other words, we have drug dealers that actually live in Shelbyville. Would that be correct? Okay. Do you then identify, like, where they live at and all that kind of stuff, like where their locations are? I'm assuming that even though you know where they're at, it's hard to actually be able to arrest them for anything. And I know there is laws of privacy laws that you can't give out information on this or that. The idea of, like, public trying to help in a situation like that, would it be possible to actually come up with some kind of identification of where the hotspots are in town, where known dealers actually live, so other people would actually know where to look out for, for these people when they're in these places? And I know there's privacy things, but there's usually ways you can get around things to have that information come out. Because I understand you're saying, you know, you need the public's help, but if they actually know where to be looking at, they'd have a better chance of maybe putting together, you know, a hit list on where they can be looking for, and then to use that number that you're talking about. The other part too, I have a question on, and you maybe have looked into it. Are most drug dealers in town, do they rent the places that they live at? Would that be pretty common? Okay, I don't know if they do it here, but we're from a community up north, and I had to deal with it because I had rental property up there. And if there was undesirables in your rental property, code enforcement was at that property doing inspections on it and making the owner's life holy hell for no other reason, and they wanted them to get that person out of that house. As soon as they got that person out of there, all these code infractions all disappeared. And they literally would use code enforcement as a hammer over the head of whoever owned the property. I will tell you, what I mean by the Privacy Act is, we had properties that there would be police reports there. You would call the police and ask them, "What was this about? What was this tenant in a problem with?" Well, they couldn't tell us. I said, "Can I get a report?" "No, we can't do that." I'm like, "Well, how am I supposed to dress this person? What am I supposed to tell them?" And stuff like that. It finally got to the point where they would give us a report, but they had whited out everything on it, so you couldn't tell what it was anyway. But as far as the code enforcement thing, I do know that that was effective, that if you want to get a person out of that property, you can deal with the owner of it. And now, up there, they would do, and actually, because it was a rental property, they decided they could do inside inspections too. And they come in there and put up such a laundry list of things that that tenant, I mean, the owner, he'd have to spend $15,000 to correct all the infractions they found in this house. But once he got the guy out, it's all good and stuff. And I guess the point of it is, if you can't, like, if you can't arrest these people, you want to make their life so miserable that they're not going to stay in this town anymore. Oh, there's ones they move from here, they go to there. Okay, you identify that. And I know it takes a little bit of doings on it. The other point I guess too on is, if you identify a house that has undesirables in it, do you then, are you able to identify who they are that are coming and going and stuff like that? Is that pretty obtainable or not? Okay, because my thought is, policeman stops them, says, "Your taillight's out. Let me see your, you know, your license number." "Oh, taillight's back on now. Looks like you're okay, fella." You know, and go and stuff. Other question I has is pertaining to, and I didn't get it out of here, the drug problems that you have in the town here, do they seem to originate at the junior high level even? Or is it even lower than that? Is a junior high level kind of like where it starts, and then obviously spills up into the high school level? Again, we haven't had any kids in the Shelbyville school system here, so I don't know what all they do. But my question is, do they have like a drug awareness program that's presented to the kids in the junior high level and the high school level? And what does that program consist of? And I'm referencing to, I'm a little older than some in here, but I'm thinking back on when, and some people may remember, we used to have driver's training in high school. Now, at that point, and it probably isn't politically correct anymore, but at that point, when you had driver's training, they showed you the pictures of the dead person in the car and all this kind of stuff. It was a shock treatment, but it tried to get through to the kids. Don't kid yourself, that could be you. And I didn't know if, like, the drug programs they presented in the school systems could kind of fall along that line, that if you had like an assembly of people, of kids, in a room, and you know from your statistics, you're telling us that a certain percentage of them, if they're in junior high at high school, some of them aren't going to be here. And I don't know how it's presented in your programs, but if you sat there and told a bunch of kids and say, "Hey, I want you to look around, because 25 of you are going to be gone, just like these pictures were showing up here. See this kid here? He's no longer here." And I don't know if it'd be kosher to show a kid lying there dead and one of him alive. But the point of it is, is that you kind of do that shock thing to get them to actually realize what's going on. And the same thing you mentioned about parents, is if it shows, and I don't know your statistics, but if you can tell a group of kids that, okay, of you, you know, 20 of you aren't going to have your parents with you by the time you're in high school. You know, have them all look around, say, "Whose parents do you think it's going to be here?" But it's just the point I know is, you got to get them...
Yeah, I know.
Okay. I'm, I answer, I'm just, yeah, okay. Stop it there.
No, that's fine. That's fine. That's what this, this is your evening. But he did ask five or six questions. They're all good questions. Let's get them addressed. Do you get them all? Because I can break them down for you, but...
I think.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, chief. What do you, I think we got a question for everybody on the panel. But that's okay. That's why we're here. Go ahead.
We do offer a DARE program in the elementary schools and the middle school.
Well, when you say you offer, or is it required?
Well...
Do they accept?
This...
If this is such a problem, I would think the school should require it.
It's, well, we offer it to the schools. We work in conjunction with the schools, and it's not something they can opt out of. That's not what I meant to say.
Okay.
So, yes, it is part of the curriculum. So...
How often is that given?
It's a, and I don't remember the exact, Mike, do you know the amount of weeks is given? I can't tell you that. It's...
Yeah, they, he, it's, what, starts in third grade? I believe it's third grade, and I think they get like a week. So, every kid gets a week of, it's called the DARE program.
I mean, is it like once a year? Is that what it amounts to, or?
Yes. Yeah, every year. Because the schools are battling so much with their own, you know, as we all know nowadays, schools, you know, kindergarten kids are learning more. Kindergarten for me was milk and cooking. And nowadays, it's not like that anymore. So, the schools are battling for so much time that, you know, our DARE program gets a week, every kid gets a week program that they graduate from. And it's what, third, fourth, and fifth grade, I believe is what it is. They get it every year for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And then, once they're out of fifth grade, it doesn't move into the, to the middle school or high school.
It doesn't.
I guess my approach on this is, because I know you're all talking about helping the people that are hooked now, my approach is more trying to get it at where it starts at. And that's, you know, where the long-term success is going to be on it. Do the schools, like, have anti-drug posters they put up, and your friend won't give you this, and these kind of things, that even though they sound simple, but with kids, if they keep seeing that, after a while, it starts to roost home for them? And I didn't know if they did that kind of stuff in the schools, if they have really eye-catching posters about this type of stuff.
We actually, through the, like, the Drug Free Coalition, we have campaigns that we do, where we'll actually hang banners through downtown Shelbyville for Red Ribbon Week or Orange Ribbon Week, whether it's drugs or alcohol. We have breakfast where we bring parents in, we bring educators, we bring kids in, and we have speakers, impact speakers really, that talk about how, you know, kind of like Misty and his family over here, talk about how it's affected their life. So, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction when it comes to education, and I get what you're saying, is when we hit middle school and high school, we're too late. And we really have to start educating the younger kids...
Even at the grade school level.
At the grade school level. And you're right. It's, what can we do to do that? And we're trying to do that. But at the same time, it is also is, as a parent, how can you educate yourself to educate your child? So, we've got even, we've got another partner in this. It's not just the schools, and it's not just law enforcement now. We need parents to educate themselves, because, guys, this is just like technology. You buy an iPhone today, and it's outdated tomorrow. Drugs are the exact same thing. It is such a fast, involving network that they have, that you've got to keep educating yourself on this.
And there are other programs as well. The Drug Free Coalition does movies in the park during the summer, because there's not much guidance in the summer for some of these kids to bring them there. And again, all the messages there are anti-drug. There are other programs. One that my office has done for several years, that I actually brought to Kent, absolutely, and he started it, is a drug-free calendar, basically an anti-drug calendar. And the kids out of three grades out of all the schools, and they all compete and try to draw up anti-drug messages, and then we do calendars. And we actually use, basically, forfeited drug money, so the dopers are paying for it to give them little incentives. They give $100 to one, and this and that, and they're rewarded. And then, we pay to have these things printed. This year, I think we printed 4,500 calendars, and they were distributed to the schools and then other places. Then, we also had calendars, or posters made from that. I know Lee came and got some to put up at Moorestown High School. The posters will show several of the anti-drug messages. The idea is, these kids will listen to each other more than they will us old people. I know with some kids, it's almost like a, if you want to call it, it's almost like a brainwashing, that if you keep putting the same image out there, even though you don't realize it, they will take it in after a while, and their instinct will be, "Oh, you don't do that." And my thinking is even like on the school buses and stuff like that, is it possible to put anti-drug things on the school bus they ride every day? You know, that shows that kind of stuff and that. And I understand the efforts out there, but like, once-a-year thing, you have to kind of question, how much of a lasting impact is that going to have? But I know there's a lot of things to go about to try to make it happen on a regular basis. And to answer some of your other questions, you asked about using code enforcement to get around the law. That's something that absolutely would not, how many of you would like for us to, first of all, over half the people in Shelbyville, I believe, rent, right? Over half the homes are rented. So, over half the people in Shelbyville. So, if we just think there's drugs there, then with no other evidence, we can show up and start harassing you. This isn't so much thinking about there's drugs. That's the jackboot thug theory that people wouldn't fly for, I'll tell you. We're from Lake County, okay? If that explains anything. I think if you check around, you'll find that I'm known as one of the most aggressive prosecutors in this area. I'm sort of a whack-'em and stack'em kind of guy, and that's why so many people are shocked that I'm coming up with this treatment program thing. It's not changing anything. That's for the lower-level offenses. You do the major ones, you're still going to go. But even I would say, no, we can't just use code enforcement as a way to harass the crap out of somebody because we don't like someone living there, and cost them $15,000 and hope that they get the message to get rid of this guy or girl. No, see, it don't cost them $15,000. What that is, is they've identified an undesirable that's on a property, and they don't want that person there anymore. And once they've identified that, they're basically sending that owner a message that, "Hey, you need to evict this guy and get him off the property because he's bad news." All those code enforcement things, once the person's gone, they don't pursue that anymore. Again, that's something that would be, I assure you, we would end up in a very properly filed lawsuit very quickly with something like that. You know, it's, like I say, I'm known as one of the more aggressive, you can check around with other, I have detectives come from other areas, I have detectives call me from other areas on ideas for ways to do things. But I do stay within the law, and I demand that my officers do the same, which brings me up to another thing you asked. You talked about identifying the people who are in these drug houses and faking a bad taillight to ID them and all that. That better not be happening here. My officers, first of all, you follow someone along if you can find a legitimate reason to stop them. But they better not be lying for a reason to stop them. But when they get them stopped the right way, we're going to deal with them. We're going to deal with them aggressively. And that's one reason, I could play a number of jail phone calls. These guys get put in jail, and they're trying to set up things. "Hey, come down, bring so-and-so this dope she's going to sell and bond me out." I ain't coming to Shelbyville. Our dopers, they don't want to come to Shelbyville from Indy. And I'll tell you what, there's some people I see in here right now that I prosecuted who can tell you, "Yeah, that's a fact." There's some people, I'm not going to start pointing them out, but there's people in here that I prosecuted who will agree with that. Well, I guess my thinking on that is, if you can identify a hotspot, you won't have somebody calling that number because so-and-so's relatives came in to see him that night. They got all these people back and forth. But if they know that that's a problem area... Let me tell you something. You see, you see people stopping in one night because Aunt Jenny's sick, you don't have to call. If you do, it's okay. We'll look into it a little bit. But if you start seeing night after night, especially at night and on weekends, and you see 10 people visit for five minutes each, that ain't because Aunt Jenny's sick, all right? And you'll tell the type of vehicle stopping and so on. I, I know I'm, I'm generalizing in things we shouldn't be doing here, but you'll be able to look and tell what's going on when people come in and then they come running out and hop in the passenger seat and the other guy sat in the, you know, in the car with it running the whole time. You can generally tell, okay? If it, if it just doesn't feel right, give us a call. If you're wrong, it's okay.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to come right down there. You, you look like you're very young. You in high school? I don't want to, uh, you can say your name, but I really don't, that's not what my intent is. Is there drugs in high school? Can you get drugs if you wanted to? Okay, then you have a question? Go ahead.
Uh, well, first of all, I'm McKenna Hall. I'm a freshman at Shelbyville High School. Um, believe it or not, today we actually had a speaker, a guest speaker come in and talk about drugs and kind of some awareness about stuff like that. And so I've gone through elementary school and middle school and I'm now starting high school through the, um, the, this district, the Shelbyville District. And I did go through the DARE program and it's a good program. I can't tell you if I remember it or not. It was a few years ago, but I have the T-shirt. And, um, we receive, uh, uh, at least one drug awareness program every year through middle school and, um, sometimes even twice a year. So it is, and we had our program today, we cut out an hour and a half of our time of the school day. And the sophomores have ISAP testing next week and finals are coming up. So there's so much that we need to be doing and we were still able to cut out an hour and a half of our class time for this awareness. So the schools are doing everything they can. But we know about it, we're aware. So the problem isn't that the kids don't know about it, because we all do. Um, I also have a question. Uh, I don't know much about drugs and I'm, don't know all the statistics, but, um, I do know of the heartbreaking amount of students at my school and other schools around our area, um, full of students whose parents are doing drugs or they're in jail. And, uh, like Mr., like you said, um, it's not a victimless crime and these students are suffering from it. So is there anything in place in our community or anything that we could be doing to help these students? Because if we want to end this cycle, it has to start there because these, we don't need parents in jail. We don't need parents on drugs. We need parents receiving treatment and who are in recovery. So is there anything that we can do to help that happen or that's already taking place in our community?
There's nothing at this point that I am aware of, but I will tell you that if you will come and talk to me afterwards, I will do whatever I can to help see that something's put into place and that we get something going for that.
Anybody else want to address that?
Yes, there, there is a program. It's ran by Melissa O'Connor, Judge O'Connor's daughter-in-law. Okay, I see some heads shaking. Some people here might be able to help her if she needs to try to get in contact. I don't have the contact information with me. There is a program that, that can help with those students, so yes.
It's called the Shelby County Youth Assistance Program.
Shelby County, that's right, Youth Assistance Program. Shelby County Youth Assistance Program.
How do students become aware of that program?
Um, well, Melissa's, how long's she been doing this?
A little over a year.
Yeah, a little over a year. She's still working on trying to help spread awareness, so you can help spread it.
Can I have a number to that?
I don't have it with me. I apologize.
Shelby County Community Corrections is where it runs out of. So if you call Shelby County Community Corrections...
Yeah, Shelby County Community Corrections, 317...
Hold on.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we need to get a directory of some kind so we can hand out so people know who to call.
I believe it's 392-64, uh, 6442, I think. You can get it.
Okay.
We'll get you the number.
Okay.
We can move on.
Go ahead.
Right. I, I, I just gave what I believe is the number. 392-6492, I, I think is the number. Is that right?
Yeah, and I mean, truly...
We'll get you that, we'll get you that number. That's, that's why we're here.
It's online, phone book.
Give me just one moment and I'll have it. I have it right here in my phone.
That's a great question. We, we've asked for your help and we need to, these are the situations that we need to look at. Can we do better? I mean, look, I, I, I ask myself every year, can I do better? We need to do better. So this is something that's brought up. We need to address it. That's a great point. I appreciate your courage. You're going to be very successful someday and you don't want to know about drugs either, so that's good. I had this hand, she was up earlier. I want to get everybody that was, I seen your hand up first. Go ahead, sorry.
I have a question for, I have a question for Scott. Just out of curiosity, what is the average cost of an ambulance ride to go deal with somebody who's OD? Just ballpark.
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I feel everybody's passion. I'm so glad that...
She asked what that costs.
You're next. Eight hundred dollars?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred dollars. Sorry, my hearing aids are low.
Hi, I'm Belinda Fairchild and I am a teacher at Shelbyville High School. I happen to have McKenna as my student in my health class and she will be learning more about drugs. Uh, sir, to answer your question, the state of Indiana in, is required every student is to graduate and pass health education. We have that for one year. It's one semester. It could be longer, but every student has to take that and it is state-required. We do have drug education in that classroom. So yes, I will say that today we had a wonderful, um, guest speaker who has made bad choices and has turned his life around. But the thing that took, that touched me the most, I agree with Misty, who's a former student of mine also. She says we have a stigma and we need more treatment. This gentleman who spoke, who was 31-years-old from Kokomo originally and graduated from Marion, he actually asked our students, how many are using drugs and would like to have treatment and would like to stop? Did you see the hands being raised? Am I going to say at least 100? I was at the back, too many. I was shocked. I saw some of my own students that I have in my classroom. They didn't, they don't know that I saw them. That was shocking. I went to a doctor here in town about a month ago. Lady, a nurse took me in and she said, "I have one question. Are you a teacher?" And I said, "Yes." "Are you still teaching?" I said, "Yes." She was a former student. I literally sat and heard her heart break because her son is at the middle school and he is having psychological problems and she doesn't know what to do with him because all of his friends are so messed up about their parents doing drugs. Not them, their parents. Now she has to get counseling for her son because his friends, "We have a problem and we need the stigma. We need treatment. We have over 100 students who would like to stop." I don't think we have the manpower in this community even help them. And it's expensive, but we have to start. It was very devastating to see that today. And I see it in our classroom. It's affected, it's affecting the education.
Your phone number? It's, uh, 317-392-6497.
I appreciate your comments. Um, it does happen in the adult population. We want to cover everybody tonight. The 100 people that raised their hand, what do we tell them? Okay, what, what can we do? We need, we need to find a solution for those 100 kids. They're here local. You just said they're here. I don't care who they are. There are 100 kids out there that have raised their hand for help. We need to get somebody that they can call. And so I don't know what we can do. Any suggestions about the 100 people that raised their hand? What do you tell them? What's the first call they make?
The first, the first thing they need to do is they need to go to the parents.
They're scared. Do they want to tell the parents?
They need to go to their parents.
Okay.
Their, their parents need to make the...
And that may be your first point, is going to school counseling.
Right.
The counselors at school then are your avenue because if the parent is not the avenue, then the school counselor is the avenue.
Yes.
So we need to write that down and some, we need to follow up with you about an avenue, whatever it takes, though those 100 people, at least we have to give them the option. And that's part of why we're here tonight. Yes, sir. Okay, go ahead. Uh, go ahead, you are...
I came tonight for one purpose. I live across the street from Hendrick's Point Apartments and, uh, the constant, uh, stop-bys are happening across the street from me. I live alone. So my first point in coming tonight was what am I supposed to do as a single woman with drug dealings going on across the street from me? And maybe my answer is 398 call. And if it is, that's the first thing I need to know. But then as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, okay, I also am a teacher, not in this corporation anymore, but I'm also a teacher. And the teacher in me then wants to go out. Do I then start meeting my neighbors? Do I start giving them this phone number? And how often do we call when this guy, there's a young gentleman who lives across the street in this apartment who is meeting people on a regular basis all hours of the day and night? Anytime, every time.
Yes, anytime, every time.
So I'm just going to start making index cards and putting this number and going to my, to my neighbors and letting them know that this neighborhood is not going to be taken by this apartment building. Is that the way I understand that?
It's a war on drugs and there's a good soldier. We need to get that number. Here again, city council, county council, um, maybe a grant through the Drug Free Coalition. Um, I want, wherever you go in this city, a billboard. I don't care. But it, it has to be nice. I want that number somewhere that we can, that everybody can see. So I'll get right back with you. This gentleman's been waiting for a while. You'll have to talk loud. Just talk to Mike.
My name's Chris Matney. Um, I got more of a comment than a question. I want to give Brad props for the, the program he's starting.
Thank you.
I am a recovering addict. I used for 30 years and I'm on the Vivitrol program, so it does work.
Congratulations.
I, you know, I've lost a lot of, a lot of friends and I have friends incarcerated. And, uh, you know, it, it, the only thing that hurts about that is there's only going to be five spots to begin with, you know? Yeah, you know, so, I mean, I, the, the stigma thing is what's got to go, you know? Because it took me a long time to just be able to say, hey, I'm a recovering addict. You know, that, that wasn't me. I've never been in trouble with the law. So, you know, you say it's a steal or deal and that's the truth. I mean, it is. I've never been in trouble with the law, but I was that guy, you know? And it's, it's got to go. And there's so many young kids dying that they're dealing death. I mean, that's the only way you can put it. They're dealing death. It's not dealing drugs. They're dealing death. It may not kill them this time, but it's going to kill them one time. You know, it may not be the 100 times before, but it's going to be that one time, you know? And I'm so glad that they're starting a program in the jail because, you know, I mean, you know, I think it needs, the, the recovering addicts in this community need to get more involved with the schools, with things like that, because they can tell the story. People like you guys, they, they can recommend this and that, but they don't know what it's really about. I mean, when you've got somebody that's used for 30 years and can sit and talk to a child that's just getting into this game, you know, about what life really happens, you know, I mean, that makes a big difference. And I wish somebody would have done it for me. That's all I got.
What's your first name again?
Chris.
Chris, thank you for your courage to tell your, your story.
Help with these programs, to help spread the word. And I'd like to back up a moment to the school issue. We had an issue in the Eastern School, uh, earlier this year with drugs. And I met with the superintendent as well as, as some of the principals. And, uh, then went to a student meeting and then a public meeting that night. And one of the things that, that I recommended there is because there are kids who want help. I think the school is in a great spot to set up a way for the kids to report. Everyone does their text thing. Have a special way they can text, special number they can call, special way they can, they can email. And, and talk to, also to, to your, uh, uh, principal and so on about maybe bringing in some, some counselors on certain days. If kids want to come and, and, you know, miss part of a class to come meet real quick with a counselor, get that first step. Um, that's important because I think Chris will back me on this. They always want to quit, but they're not always ready. And if you catch them when they're ready, you can get them. If you don't, they're, they're going to die or they go to jail or something, you know, it's, it's never going to turn out good. Chris seems to make me a liar out of me because, because he's turning out good, but...
You know...
Pardon?
With me, it was always, I'm going to quit tomorrow, but tomorrow never came.
Yeah.
It got to where I had the doctors tell me, "You don't quit using, you'll be dead by the end of the year." And that's what it took for me. And to get to that point, I, you know, I don't want to see that happen to nobody, but sometimes it takes that to open somebody's eyes. You know, when, when you're a guy that's got a quarter ounce a day meth habit and 30 to 50 pain pills a day, you know, there's a problem. And the doctors are starting a lot of this problem by handing out all those pain pills.
So you were spending, what, 300, uh, 300 a day?
I wasn't, well...
Two fifty to 300?
That's, that's what it would have costed somebody.
Yeah.
That's just in the meth. You know, the pills were another thing.
Yeah.
You know, because I was getting all, I, I tried to justify the pills because the doctor was giving them to me, you know? And that's where it all starts, is people can't, they don't have the access to that, so they go to the heroin. They, they, you know, they go to the other things. For me, it was, the pills weren't doing it for me no more because I have chronic pain, so I put other things on board. And then my life just spiraled out of control, you know? And just luckily, by the grace of God, I never got arrested or I never died.[1579.11] And just luckily, by the grace of God, I never got arrested, or I never died. Because I seen people dropping around me like flies that were doing less than what I was doing. And my thing was, what makes me any better? But there's never an answer for that, you know? There's just gotta be more help involved, you know? And I think that's where it all starts, is getting it out there in the community. And, you know, I just had three teeth yanked out this morning, cut out. But I'm here tonight because this has to change, you know? Because I got a fifteen-year-old daughter that's struggling with these issues right now, and it pains me, you know, to see her going down that road. Because I've been there, I know what it's like, and I'm trying to tell her, you know? And, you know, it, it makes me, kinda makes me feel like a hypocrite, but that's where it's gotta stop, you know? Just 'cause you're a parent that used, or has used, that may, that does not make it right for you not to tell your children, oh, Matt, you can't do that, you know? Because that's what I've had to sit down and finally do, was say, hey, you know, it, it's gotta stop, you know? Because they say, oh, it's just weed. Well, you know, the meth, next time, it may just be weed with a little something put in it. And they're gonna go back after that same high.
It all starts with weed.
Yeah, it, it, that's what they all say, oh, it's just weed. Well, you know, that's what it was for me thirty years ago, just weed.
Never met an addict, didn't start with weed.
You know? But it's, it's gotta start somewhere, and I think it's somewhere it's here. And I was so glad to see something like this happen, finally, to where it can be put out there, you know? The, you know, just the amount of people I see here, it really touches me, you know? Because that, that shows that people really do care. And you, like, she was saying about the, the traffic at her, at the people across the street. Call every time! You know, because I know, when you see a car come and go ten times in the same night, up until three, four o'clock in the morning, there's something going on. Because I was that household, you know? And just 'cause I owned my house, a lot of people didn't say nothing about it, you know? But that's the problem, you know? When you're seeing it happen, that's when you gotta call. I don't care if you gotta call ten times a night. That's the only way it's gonna change.
What was the turning point for you? When was enough enough?
When I just, I didn't, I didn't wanna die, but I didn't wanna live how I was living no more.
Someone could've told you, you're, would you drink this poison? You wouldn't do it, but it was poison.
God, it explained to me, like, when I was in rehab, the addictions doctor told me, said, well, you're putting stuff in your body that'll kill them trees out there, that'll kill the grass. But you're putting that in your body. You know, if somebody told you to drink rat poison, would you do it? And, well, no. Then why are you putting that stuff in your body? You know? And I never thought about it like that, until I had the treatment. And it's a shame that more people can't get treatment, because I know what it costs and my insurance paid for it a hundred percent. And, you know, I know why people don't get help, is 'cause they can't afford it. You know, so they either end up going to jail or dying, because they can't get that help. Because once you're addicted, it's not that you wanna do it every day, that you gotta do it every day just to survive, to be able to function, because you don't want that dope sick, you know? And it's, that's truly it. I mean, that's the way I was. I, you know, I didn't wanna live like that, but I didn't know what to do neither, you know?
Those that don't understand exactly, what's dope sick? Tell everybody what dope sick's like.
People see it on the movies, about people laying in the corner, cramping and throwing up. Well, I tell you what, when the smell of water boiling makes you sick to your stomach, that's dope sick. You know, how many people get sick from the smell of water boiling on the stove? You know, I mean, that, that just don't happen to a normal person. But when you're dope sick, that's the way you feel, when every muscle in your body hurts. It hurts to open your eyes, you know? It, it's, it's hard to explain, it really is. But it's easier to get high than what it is go through that, unless you've got something to fall back on to where you can go. Like me, I, you know, I went to a real nice rehab facility. Not everybody's got that option, you know, but I did. And if it wasn't for that place, you know, I, I probably wouldn't be alive today.
I appreciate it. Um, thank you very much. You're a good person. Thank you very much. We're gonna try, I hope Missy and somebody else, and we're gonna have to, um, have maybe down the road, something at the Strand, where we're gonna have success stories like you. Because people need to hear from the people. And we've got a lot of good questions. I'm gonna take your question. I'm coming next to you. So, young lady.
Um, my name's Elizabeth Clark. Um, I'm the administrative assistant at the Shelby County Drug Free Coalition, and I'm also a senior at Shelbyville High School. Um, I just kinda wanna share a little success story. This year, me and another student, um, we went to a training over the summer, and it was in Las Vegas, and we learned how to teach a medicine safety class to fifth and sixth graders. And so, we taught that at the girls' club and at St. Joe. And it was about over-the-counter medicine. And it was really successful at Girls Inc., and that was what I was really proud of, because there was one girl who they had had a lot of problems with, and she wasn't really acting well, she wasn't doing the programs that they put her in. And with us, she just like really connected, and she really like, she really loved it, she did really well, she was one of the ones that passed the test really well. And so, something else that I wanna bring up is that look out for over-the-counter medicine. Like, don't just pay attention to prescription drugs, because I also have a family member, he doesn't live here, but he's been taking Mucinex and getting high off of that and other, anything he can find. Because it's hard to stop it too, because it's not illegal, you can just go to the store and buy it. So, I just want parents to be aware of that, like, look out for what your kids are buying.
Um, you're on Facebook, obviously. You're very young, I'm, I'm a dinosaur. Um, can you get drugs on Facebook?
Um, I never have, but you probably could.
Is it out there? Do you think you can?
Yeah.
Okay. So, social media has a big play in this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, gentleman here, go ahead.
Medications. I just wanna throw in there that, um, if you're not, if you have medications that are not finished, or you're not going to use, be sure to dispose of them. They have a disposal site at, at the police station, at the sheriff's department, in the lobby. Take them up there and get rid of them. And, and it's right there in the lobby, it looks like a mail, big mailbox. Drop them in there, they'll be disposed of properly.
I think Sheriff Parks says that's a huge success.
Absolutely.
So, uh, do that. Old, uh, unused prescriptions, get them down there, get rid of them, okay?
Hi, my name's Phil Coffey. Uh, do me a favor, don't judge the book by the cover, okay? I understand I came off a little aggressive with trying to get this young lady a phone number, but I had a personal experience, my nineteen-year-old daughter almost died four years ago to the day, a two-day binge with Adderall. I carried her to the hospital, okay? Because all her friends in the auditorium watched her. Oh, she's convulsing. Who cares? Whoop-de-doo. My point being is, the state trooper here, I drive a semi for Walmart, okay? I stay in these parking lots on a nightly basis. A lot of transactions are happening right there in that parking lot. I've videoed them, I've given them to the AP associates at the stores, they've called local law enforcement. I have a drug house next to me now. I have a personal friend that's an officer here in town, he knows of it, they've been aware of it. It's not so much certain houses, it's certain landlords. There's a landlord in this town that I'm sure everybody knows, and I'm not gonna point fingers, and I'm not gonna dime him out, but he rents to the same type of people. And I'm not stereotyping, by no means, but like you said, you see ten cars per night going to that door for thirty seconds at a time, smells like a duck, walks like a duck, it's not a chicken. Okay, pretty simple. You, you want the politically correct, you know, assertion of how things are gonna be? That's what it is, okay? I have personal experiences as far as my parents were drug users my whole life. I've never taken a drug, I've never tried a drug, I've seen what it does secondhand. I wanted better things for my life. That's why I say, don't judge the book by the cover, okay? Officer, if you see me on the street, you would automatically assume, okay? Not saying just by the type of vehicle I drive, you know? But I'm a homeowner here, just like most of these folks. We care. I'm not from this community. We chose this community because they have a real good school system, okay? My kids excel here. But a lot of their friends don't have the parents at home. I can guarantee you, most of my kids' friends, when they come over, oh my God, you sit down for dinner? Well, yeah. It's a neat concept. We put our phones down, you touch it, I'm gonna break it. We're gonna communicate. I talk to my kids all the time about drugs, because they've seen what their grandparents went through. That's not what we're about. But a lot of these kids are afraid to talk to their parents, okay? I'm not saying I'm the hippest parent in the world, you know? What happened in the fifties, the sixties, the seventies, doesn't work in two thousand, it just doesn't. You, you ask this young lady if you can get drugs on Facebook? I don't do Facebook, but I can go walk out on the street right now and get drugs. Because I fit the bill for somebody that can get the stuff, okay? You got money, that's all it takes. They don't care about you, they don't care about your past, it's the money. But to, to bring a, a, a socialization like this to, to limelight, this is what it takes. You know, you want our help, we're here, it's obvious. But take our advice, you know? If, if we call, you know, the 398 CARE, it shouldn't take till tomorrow for an, an officer or a community corrections vehicle to be on that street. So, i- if you want our advice, please take it, use it. I'm, I'm, I'm here to help you folks. You know, I wanna live here and, you know, for quite a few years. But I don't want my house to blow up because of the meth, the meth lab right next to me. You know, it's just that simple. So, I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm glad to see this many people from the community care.
You call it aggressive, I call it just passion. And I appreciate you being here, because that's what we need. We need to talk truthfully, we need to have a frank discussion, that's what I, I want here. I make a call, chief, um, and give you a tip. Where does that call start and end up? Or Brad's call line? If I make a call?
It goes to our investigator supervisor, and he determines who he's gonna assign it to, and they look into it appropriately.
I know everybody has hours of the day they work, okay? Drug dealers don't work on certain hours. They stay asleep all day long, they're up all night. I understand most officers don't work those kinda hours. But have somebody that's on call, you know? I'm not gonna call a friend of mine and say, hey, there's something going on at the house next door. And he's a cop, and he would gladly go over there. But that's not his job at two in the morning, okay? But if you call the 398 CARE, or you call dispatch, there should be some kinda state car or city car in that area, you know, to at least observe what's going on.
Dispatch, that's exactly what will happen. We'll send someone right then and there.
But if you call the three, the 398 call, not CARE, no problem. Uh, but if you call 398, but if you call 398 call, that's going into a tips hotline. You don't always get a good investigation if you show up with a, a law enforcement presence right away.
Correct, I understand that.
Your, your dopers, and I think there's a foreman here will tell ya, they watch for the police, when the police show up, they, they cool, they chill out. And you might get them to slow down for the night, but as far as making a case and coming up with an investigation, a prosecutable case...
And, and I completely understand that.
Even if they show up, you probably won't know that they're there.
Right. And I completely understand, but most people sitting here, they don't have the, they're concerned, but they're not going to come outside and confront people.
Oh, God, don't, don't do that. Do not do that.
That's, that's my point. I come from the Marine Corps. Nobody intimidates me.
Yeah.
Okay? And you're not gonna invade on my, my personal property.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you for your service, by the way.
My honor.
Appreciate it.
Most of these people don't have that kinda attitude or personality to come out and confront somebody, okay? I'm not twenty, I'm not gonna swing hands with you anymore. It hurts at forty. And I'm not going to jail over a drug head.
They don't swing hands anymore either.
But, but I'm gonna protect my family, you know? And I'm gonna protect my neighbors and my friends. But to make that call, some people are just scared. They don't wanna, the retaliation of, oh my God, this guy's gonna do something to my house, and then he's gonna move tomorrow. We've watched people move out from the, the residents next to us in hours in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
So, I understand to try and track them is hard, but when we call, action needs to be taken immediately.
Right.
You know, to a certain extent, you know?
And, and on your, your issue of you don't want them retaliating, again, you can remain anonymous by calling that number, most people do. If you will leave a number, we can call you back and say, hey, what color car?
I've left numbers numerous times. I'm, I'm sure dispatch and a couple other officers have known.
Okay.
I don't care about dying people out, 'cause I used to believe snitches get stitches. Well, like this gentleman said, when you become a parent, that's out the window. I'm concerned for my kids. I wanna make contributing members of society, not people that are leeching on the system and spending every night in jail, you know? So, that's what I'm saying. Most people are just scared to confront not only officers, or even come up to an officer. I do it at football games, you know, make it not so obvious, or, or sporting events. If I see an officer, hey, we've had a garage blow up a block away from me because it was a drug house, the cops knew about it, but they could never catch the guy. And I'm sure you know which garage I'm talking about.
Yeah. Robert, uh, jumping the last name.
Yeah, yeah. Those are the types of things I'm, I'm trying to express to you, is the concern's here, the care's here. We are obviously passionate, like you said, or we wouldn't be sitting here on our own time. We care as a community. So, it, it just needs to be, you know, reciprocated from the law enforcement and, and EMS and, and from the, you know, the, the different community action committees. We're here for you just as much as you are for us. So, let's not make this a one-sided street and make this, well, we had this meeting in two thousand seventeen, it didn't go anywhere. Why not every couple of months have something like this, where people just, I'll make time out of my life.
I, I appreciate that suggestion. That, that is my goal, maybe not for me, but I, I don't like to be a part of, but I want someone else to keep doing this, 'cause this is what we need to do. We can't leave here tonight and say, okay, we had a good discussion, okay? This has got to continue, because we've always talked. The thing you can do, and the thing you can do, call your state legislature every day, I don't care. Call, you won't talk to him, call, say, we're not taking it anymore. We're not taking it anymore, okay? You need to put them, hold them accountable. They hold some purse strings, hold them accountable. Thank you for your suggestions.
People tonight, three months from now, you might have a hundred people show up. 'Cause I'm gonna talk to my neighbors, they're gonna talk to their neighbors. And we wanna see results. It's not gonna happen overnight, but we're here to make a difference. Thank you very much. Gentleman down here.
Thank you. And Brad, I appreciate you putting it together. Uh, if you know me, you know that I'm very passionate about this subject. And it's one of the things that I've fought, you know, for most of my life. I had a brother involved in it. Thirty-six years ago, I kinda got a touch by somebody who was very impressive to me, who I really thought was a role model to me. Before I go into that though, I wanna ask, how many administrators do we have here in this gymnasium today? The true fact is, it's prevention where we're gonna turn the tide. I am Lee Lang cable, I am a parent, I sit on the county council, and I've been fighting this issue for a long time. Wisely, I had some friends that said, Lee, you need to sit on the county council, 'cause that helps fund the, the protection of our public. And that's one of the things that I, when I got involved, I realized how hard these guys work at prevention and prevent, and protecting our public. And they truly, truly do. But it's prevention, because once, and especially the drugs nowadays, once a student, or once a kid gets a dose, or gets hooked, they're gonna be hooked, and it's gonna cost a tremendous amount of money to turn them in another direction. We have to keep spending it at this end. But prevention is the key in turning them around. I look at the simple calendar that our prosecutors in the past and now do. But I look at the excitement of the kids about their picture being in this calendar. I mean, that is one of the greatest tools that I think that we put out here into our schools. When I sit there and look at the positive message of keeping your kids off drugs, and yeah, posters and things like that, but in a true, positive sense, we need that information to those kids. Because as administrators, or as teachers, you know the excitement, and you know the power you have over that child's life. And that's what we need to have. When I sat there and looked at this gymnasium, this is a great facility, but I don't see any positive message to keep kids away from drugs, in the hallway or anywhere. And it's something that we need to, to have. The posters that we created off of those calendars were golden. Two people that are extremely, have impressed my life, or had, and been a big impact on my life. And I truly love basketball. And I know a tremendous amount about basketball. Bobby Knight, thirty-six years ago, I came down here for many times. And Bobby Knight had a coaching clinic, it filled half of that stadium with coaches from all over the country. And one coach got up and asked, Bobby, do we control our kids getting prepared for a basketball game? It was a high school coach. And I tell you what, Bobby went on a rant for a long time about the front, the development of the brain of a young person, and why it's so important for us as adults to help direct and help them make positive decisions. Not to control them, but to help them make positive decisions. If a coach isn't talking about those issues, and making sure the kids are home Friday night, Saturday night, taking care of themselves, I tell ya, you look in the papers all the time, they, their teams are destroyed. Bobby Knight was a huge influence on me. And it's funny that thirty-six years ago, he told me that story down there. But another one, and I learned when I was young, and it just came to my mind more and more and more, is the book, God. In our book, it says, it's written, teach them when they're young. You know, it, it says that for a reason, because that's when they're going to, that's when they're most apt to learn and accept and say, yes, that's the way I'll be. Teaching them when they're young is, is a golden rule. And I know, Brad and I have talked a lot about issues about how much money we spend on the after when someone gets hooked. How do you prevent that? I'll tell ya, once they get hooked, once they're involved in it, you have to give them hope, or you have to give them that power of God above them, I truly believe, that will help them through that issue. Because it is a hard thing to turn around, an extremely expensive thing to turn around. Prevention is, is pennies compared to how much money we put into the other end of it. And I think that's important. The, uh, I guess I'll say, on that end of it, prevention is extremely less expensive than all the areas that we look at here in this county. And I think that we need to put more dollars towards prevention, and it starts at our elementary schools, it starts at our young, young kids, to help those kids grow and have strong direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Going to take a few more questions. Lady had her in here.
I don't really have a question, but I'm one of those that you prosecuted. And back then, there wasn't a program. It was actually told to me that jail was a place not to rehabilitate, but to house criminals. So my hats are off to you, that we've come a long ways. And we can say, I wish it would have happened 20 years ago, and it doesn't matter, it's happening now, and that's what's important. And I will tell you that it's a generational problem. I was an independent contractor after that, my whole life turned around, well, it was kind of turned around before I got prosecuted, but that's all right. When I worked for Department of Child Services, when we removed children from the home, we couldn't even place them with the grandparents, because the grandparents were actually doing what the parents were doing. So I am telling you, it is a generational problem. We've got a lot of work to do, because it's not just the child, it's not just the parent. We've got to go on back. So, I do appreciate what we're doing today, and it is important. I know my drug dealer got clean and started praying for me, is how I got clean. So I'm telling you, it's about miracles, and they happen every day.
What would you suggest for other people that are either into drugs, or don't know where to get the help, or?
You know, it's, I took clients to Louisville, because there you can get in there without any money. So, it is a problem, and it's not anything that's going to be resolved right here tonight. It's going to take...
The Cairns Program? In Louisville?
At Louisville?
Yeah.
It was the...
Certified Counseling Associates?
Yes.
Okay. I've seen several down there.
And it's a free program. They take people from there first, and then, you know, outside of there, but...
No, that place costs. I spent $5,000 to get a minute down at the Cairns.
No, okay, that's not it. It's downtown Louisville. And to get a bed, you may have, I mean, they take in homeless people, to get a bed, you may have to walk around during the day, and then just sleep there at night until they can get you into the detox program. But they will take you free charge. We don't have anything like that in Indiana. So it's not going to be resolved here tonight, but it's going to take, this is a start, and it's going to take everybody working together. And I know you have to build cases, and I know it just, you know, we can't just call and say, fix it. Otherwise, I'd be fixing a problem that's in my family, Rhonda'd be fixing a problem that's in her family. That's what we'd be doing. But we, you know, it's just no easy fix.
Appreciate that. The governor is doing a state, I don't know how long it's going to take, they're doing a study now to, we want to know how many beds it's going to take, we want to know if we can make more beds. Can we get people in here? It's all about money. It can't be about money. We need to have programs that are readily available. It's going to cost money, but we're going to save lives, and that's why we're here tonight.
Young women that was placed at a home here through Jabal with no guidance. There's not even, I mean, one girl has three months clean, and the other one has, I forget, six months clean, and they have cameras. I mean, that's unheard of. But they're making it, somehow they're making it, because they're reaching out to churches, to counselors in churches. I'm like the Marine, I'm not a Marine, but you know what? I'm a mama that's been, that's seen my child struggle. I struggled, and I'm willing to break down doors, you know, because at this point, I don't care. I'm tired of being afraid of offending somebody, because I want to stand up for the person that deserves something better than to be a drug addict.
I appreciate you sharing that. I guarantee you, between you and the Marine, you could clean up a neighborhood. But you know what? Between you and the Marine walking through a neighborhood, they'd be scared. I'm telling you, drug dealers, they're tough, but they want the money. They go where the customer says. They don't want the friction of law enforcement.
Interfere with their business. We make noise, we, you know, we, I mean, yeah, they go.
I appreciate that. She's been waiting for a while, go ahead.
My name's Chastity Luther. I'm a part of this outreach on Thursday nights at that 14 W's Broadway. But we're faith-based, but we are just there to encourage anybody who's addicted, or loves anybody who's addicted. Anybody's welcome to come, and it's important, because we've got to love them where they're at. Because they're not going to, we can't judge them, we've got to take off, we've got to take our judgment caps off, and love them where they're at. And also, another thing, being a mother of two young men, we have to be approachable. I mean, these kids don't have parents at home every night. So if you're home, let the kids come to your house, so you know what's going on, and let them talk to you, and be open with them, and honest with them. Because if you're not open and honest with them, then nobody else is going to be open and honest, and that's when things are in the dark, and that's when trouble comes up. And a quick story is, my stepson OD'd in 2009, and he made it. I don't know, God's the only reason he's here, it is. And that was a hard phone call to take that morning, but not everybody gets that miracle, and it happens every day. And then, also, my kids came home about a year ago and told me they'd been at a party, and I knew they were going to be there, and I told them, I don't want them to drink, but if they do, not to leave, stay there. If they have to leave, call me, I'll come get them in the middle of the night. And I don't care how inconvenient it would have been for me, I would do that, because it's safety first. But they came home early, not, neither one had been drinking, and I asked them why, and my son told me he couldn't tell me, because he had to think about it before he could tell me, and wanted to wait until the next morning. And it's because there were people in the back room shooting up and seeing who could take more. That was what they're doing at these parties with our kids, you guys. I mean, it's real, it's here, it's everywhere. And then, they both buried two or three friends, you know, distant friends, thank goodness for their sake, but it's happening, it's here, and it's time for us to take a stand.
What do you tell a child that's going to a party nowadays? I'm from the 70s, yeah, I'm that old. Children going to parties now, because they're different from the parties we had. What do you tell a child that you know maybe possible drugs are there, we don't know?
I tell my kids that if things going on illegal, to come home, or to leave, I don't care what they do. If there's something that I wouldn't let happen under my roof, then they need to get away from there. Because, I mean, they have to answer to me anyways. My kids are both adults, they both still live at home, but they still have to answer to me. It's my house, my rules. And they know, and they know right from wrong. I did, and that's important.
I take it you're a parent, you'd make the phone call if you knew drugs was there? All right, thank you.
We keep talking about drug dealers. I don't know how many actual drug dealers, I mean, I can tell you the definition of a drug dealer, but I'm telling you that there's a lot of people who would get arrested for drug dealing, who are going to Indianapolis, they're running up and down this road, and getting $50 worth, and bringing back 20 for, or 30 or 40 for somebody else, so they can get a little bit, so they're not dope sick. That is a dope dealer. I mean, I get that, but are we going to, those are the people we need to get the help to. And I'm so excited about the Vivitral program. But again, and my son has a drug dealing conviction, but it was because he was running up and down the city, up down the street, trying to get, keep from being dope sick. And, you know, it's hard for me to see that he was a drug dealer when he didn't have a home, he didn't have a car, he couldn't buy his own clothes, he picked up cigarette butts, but he's a drug dealer. I mean, so, I don't know, I just, I think when we think of drug dealer, we think of somebody who's making lots of money, and, you know, has got it going on. And I know they're up there, too. But I think most of those are in Indianapolis, and our people are running up and down 74, so keep sitting on 74.
Chief addressed that, that's why they're there. And they've been very successful. I don't know what you're really, okay, I've got a city councilman here that is going to help me with my billboard. Would you help me in the next council meeting? Get my billboard, 398, call. We need to have that.
Yeah, my name's David, and I'm one of the few that is here tonight, that can remember in 1965, or about that time, when this war on drugs began. So the last 50 years in my life, I've been watching and hearing about the war on drugs. And from my perspective, and I have not had a close encounter, like so many of you have had, I've oftentimes said, well, we've lost this war on drugs. We just continually lose it. Not because of anything that the law enforcement is not doing, and certainly, at this point in time, in the last 10, 15 years, the effort that the law enforcement has put forth is just exemplary. But the fact of the matter is, it appears that we've lost it. And my comment right now is to kind of refocus this discussion. So much of this discussion tonight has been on what, you know, how do you help people once they get on it? But when we started an hour and a half ago, I heard these gentlemen and lady and gentlemen ask us for help, to get an awareness. That was one of the key words I picked up tonight. And I also picked up the 3982255 number. And that has to do with getting more people aware. One of the common denominators over the last 50 years, I don't think we've had the awareness. And then, there was a reference tonight about, I think Mike said that there was three or four at some of these meetings. Now there's 60, and that's a good thing. Yes, 60 is better than three, but we should have Garrett Gymnasium filled. We should have 6,000 people, or nearly that number, at a meeting like this. If this community is truly going to get involved, and be aware of this problem, we should not be happy with 60 or 100 people coming to these meetings. So that focuses my mind on some type of a strong marketing campaign to our city and to our county, through our city officials, our county officials, and certainly our school officials. Marketing, 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 and help to elevate the level of awareness, awareness of this problem. Again, I go back, and I say that over the last 50 years, we have not, the communities have not been aware of this problem. And even now, I would argue that with only 60 people here, this community is not aware of this problem. I was in a prison ministry for early years in 1990. At that time, 50% of the prison population, I was told, was there because of drug-related crimes. If I crunch my numbers, what I heard tonight, and you take 90% of 2.2 million, which I think is a fair number in the prison population, we're up 90% now? I mean, we've lost this war. And again, I emphasize, I'm going to say that the common denominator is, we do not have the awareness in our communities. So, a response to you tonight, we, this community needs to go on a, you know, full-throttle forward effort to get the word out of this problem. And that's a marketing problem. It's an effort that's going to have to be dealt with, again, with the schools, the government officials, city and county, and let's fill Garrett Gymnasium, and let's get nearly 6,000 people of our community at a meeting like this.
Appreciate the comments. I've just got time, I don't want to shortchange MBI, because this is very serious, but Mr. Landwell, and I told him we'd probably not run past 8:30, so, but...
Hi, I'm Belinda Fairchild, and I don't know if anybody on our panel can give this answer, but I know in February, I was reading the Indianapolis Star statistics about the number of heroin-addicted babies that are being born and filling the hospital beds at a rate, the registered nurses don't even know how to deal with all these drug-addicted babies, and the NICU bed is $5,000 a day. They're giving SubuTex, I believe it is the name of the drug, that they're giving to addicted pregnant women at $600 a month. I'm sitting here as an educator, thinking, whew, I'm glad I'm going to be out, and not having to deal with the learning disabilities that society is going to have. They are now seeing in Colorado, they are finding THC in the urine of infants and toddlers living in the homes of parents who are smoking the legalized marijuana in their house. I'm thankful that I don't have to educate those children. We need to have that marketing campaign, Dave. I think we have those flags in our city. I think their flags should be posted with that number. We need billboards, we need fence metal on the Hendrix Point Apartments, metal with the number, call. We need to have that number. I did not even hear that number. It's going on my board at school tomorrow. We need to get that number out, and those drug users and dealers are going to know that we mean business, just by getting that number out. I mow properties around the city, and I had a lady saying, oh, I am so glad that person's moving. I know that there is probably drug activity going there. Just last weekend, I said, call the police, every single time. So I think getting that number out is going to let everybody in this community know, we mean business.
We've got another city councilman here, we've got a county councilman. We get over $3 million, city does, and we're seeing no money, okay? I'm going to, at every meeting, I'm going to propose that we get a billboard with that number on it. That's what I can do, okay? We're going to try. So everybody sees, and they know, knows what it is. And I get, I might get some flack, well, we don't want to know, you know? I don't care where they put it, I just, I want to put it, I want to put it somewhere. Okay, somebody that hasn't spoke, okay, young lady?
I just have a quick comment. First off, I would like for, Misty, you brought up the idea of the drug disposal at the sheriff's department. My issue with that is, my husband passed away, and I had to find a way to get rid of four bags, four Walmart bags full of drugs. I called every pharmacy in Shelbyville. Every single one of them informed me that was not their problem. I needed to dispose of them down the toilet. Okay, my husband was on some pretty serious drugs from cancer. It finally took me, and I actually think you were the one who took my call, it finally took me calling the sheriff's department to find out where to do that. So I am asking, can you guys inform the pharmacies? You know, they need to be informed, that they probably know that's there, but they're not informing the public. My next thing is, you guys wonder what the drug issue is in this county. I live in Geneva. I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with that, but there's maybe 50 houses in that town. I have four children, three of them growing, one now seven-year-old. I can't even let her go outside, because 75% of that area, that community, is drugs. And you don't let a child go outside in it. I have a privacy fence around my entire property, but I would not even let her go outside of my house without supervision. So that's how bad the drug issue is in this community. And I, like I said, I live in a very small, very quiet community, no one bothers anybody, but it's 75% drugs. So, that's how bad it is.
Sorry, I lost my father a year ago, you know, for his illness and age, and I called the police department, because as my wife and I was cleaning out his apartment, I come across a pound of marijuana, okay? My father did what he did. I didn't condone it, I didn't, you know, I can't promote it. I called the police department for them to come pick it up. The statement that was made to me in front of my wife and both of my kids from the officer was, I ought to arrest you for this. Perception, look at me, I get it. But I was trying to show my children to do the right thing, and give it away. Why is that from the law enforcement? I'm not against you by no means, I don't, there's no way I'd do your job. Obviously, I've done crazier things in military, but I don't envy your position. But if you want us to help you, don't look down upon those that are trying to help you just because he might not have liked the way I looked, okay? I was dealing with a really bad week, and at that point, I had to consider my convictions in life, what I wanted to do to that officer in front of my children. You try to teach your kids right, and then you get a cop that says that to you. So, like she said, she called numerous places to come pick up pills. What if somebody else would have taken those pills? You know?
This is why we're here tonight, because no longer can we talk. This panel is a very, very good panel. They need to know some of the issues, can we do better? And we're going to address them, hopefully. Okay, real quick here.
I just kind of wanted to share a little bit of a success story, and also wanted to explain what I think is important. First of all, I think it's very, very important for, I'm actually, I became a mother at a very young age, experienced some pretty chaotic things as a child, didn't really have supportive parents at all, kind of had to guide my way through life by myself. The fact that I have an almost 15-year-old daughter, and growing up in this generation just terrifies me. I mean, I'm scared to death. I pray to God that none of my children go down that path. I was actually very moved by something that came to my attention today by my daughter. She goes to the high school, she took a part of the speaker that came to the high school today. And she was very disturbed by something that someone posted on social media about the speaker that spoke that today. They were knocking what that speaker had spoken, and quote-unquote said, they didn't feel like they should have came to school today to hear a church sermon by a guy that was sharing his experience in life, and bettering his life. And my daughter was extremely distraught about it. And I, as a parent, have opened up to her, and, you know, I don't put up a wall when it comes to discussions like that. If she has questions, I answer them, I don't, you know, it's not like a pride thing. So, the fact, I feel like it's a success for me as a parent, is that my daughter, at 14, going to school with kids that are, you know, peer pressure, and kids that, you know, are doing these things, that she was, you know, she stood up, and, you know, she took something from that program, and seeing someone speaking like that about that program today bothered her. And I just feel, as a parent, I felt that was successful on my end. And I just feel like our jobs as parents, you know, in this generation, is to spread awareness, you know, be honest with them, you know, explain to them, you know, what their choices in life are, and if they take that path. And also, you know, to explain something else, my daughter, about a year or two ago, she was about 13, 14, chose... she was about 13, 14, chose a group of friends that were not a good choice. I, as a parent, explained to her, you know, "I can't be with you 24/7." She made a decision to go against what I had told her and left with a couple of these friends and their parent, which the parent was not someone that my daughter was allowed to be with. She made that choice. She left with them. My daughter actually got into some trouble. It took that one experience for her to open up her eyes and was actually at the police department. And, you know, instead of backing, you know, turning her back on those friends and, you know, acting like, you know, she was better than them or, you know, so on, she tried to help them. She tried everything she could. And when she felt like she couldn't do anymore, she finally decided that she couldn't let them bring her down and she chose another, you know, another group of friends. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is, don't teach your children to act like they're, you know, if their peers are making choices like that, try to reach out to them and try to help them instead of acting like, for instance, that they're better than them or, you know, not trying to make it sound bad, but try to help them. And I guess that's all I have to say. But I feel like as a parent, I said, I feel like I'm, as a parent, I have success in my high school daughter being affected by, positively about that speaker that was there today at the high school.
I appreciate your comments. I've heard, and there's good and bad people. Nobody cares about the bad people, okay? We have to love them, we have to have compassion. People are always going to say, tell our own social media. I've heard from several people tonight that that speaker had a positive impact, and so that's what matters. So thank you for your comments. Okay, just...
Hi, I'm Chris Scott. I work for Eastern Schools. So I see it a lot, but I'd just like to say that awareness is because of the fact that it's such a silent disease and nobody wants to talk about it. That's how we, why we have to start talking about it and get the word out is because nobody does, because it's embarrassment to the families, so...
Would you suggest the schools doing anything different? Could we do anything different from the school's standpoint? They're doing a lot, I know, but you're on the front line.
Parent involvement is the biggest thing, you know, we need the parents involved as well, and we're doing the best we can, but we're not the parents, so...
Okay, I appreciate that. Anybody else? We've got to go?
Just in regards to Mrs. Fairchild's statement about being a teacher at the school and the fact that they had the convocation today and 100 of our children in this community stood up and wanted help. My question is to you guys up there, hopefully, obviously, it's not going to be solved this evening, is there going to be something put in place where there maybe should have been counselors ready to take those kids and say, "Hey, if today's your day because you're feeling it today, you can step into my office." Are there more than just the four or five counselors at the school going to be there next time? Because it sounds like it was a wonderful program. And we had 100 of our local children ask for help today.
Me and Misty, actually, we're sitting here talking about coming up with a program that maybe the Drug Free Coalition can help fund, where you have a support group. Actually, she was going to try to get ahold of the young lady over here and talk to her afterwards, to come up with some kind of a support group with some funding from Drug Free Coalition, maybe some other areas that can help these kids. Because I think they're reaching out wanting somebody to talk to and somebody they can identify with more than necessarily counseling. I think counselors are a good option, but I think they're looking to identify with somebody and through some of these support groups, I think we can get that done. So it's actually a side conversation we just had probably 15 minutes ago, try to get something set up, so...
That's good comments. We've asked the public to be here for suggestions, ideas, help us. Mike, how can we do that? I mean, how, where does it start? From Dr. Adams? I mean, we need it, obviously, 100 people, whatever it takes. We have a resource officer out there, it's great for security. Who can we get out there, maybe not this year, but pretty darn quick, start of next year, that is going to help the 100 kids? And how do you get those back? 100 kids raised their hand today, how are we going to get those back?
I think the biggest thing is, number one, we don't have all the answers like Misty just said, but if you've got 100 kids that raised their hands, that means you've probably had 200 kids that...
Wow, that's awesome, yeah.
Were thinking it. This 100 of them didn't raise their hand. So I think that if you've identified, if you've got 100 kids in a school setting willing to raise their hand in front of teachers, God, and their parents, and whoever else was in there and say, "I've got a problem," I think you can identify with those kids now. I don't think you wait till later.
Well, that's why I'm coming.